Good morning, it's the 2nd of September, we have the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee, number eight of 2021. I am staying in the meeting at four past nine, I apologise for the fact that we're not on time, we were ready to go, but our, yeah, I think we had a problem with our live stream, so I understand that this is being recorded and will be loaded at a later date. I now call council's attendants, and I can see everyone's attendance, good morning. And letting everyone know that we have new AV systems here, so I apologise if there are any little glitches, but I'm sure we'll get through today, no problems. I note there are no council apologies. May I ask whether there are any declarations of interest on the matters on the agenda for the GIW meeting today? There are none, I move on to business outstanding, and there is none. We move on to the confirmation of the minutes, that's item one, to the confirmation of minutes in the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee, at number seven of 2021, from the 5th of August, and I will move that. Do I have a second, or, thank you councillor Milligan? Is there any discussion on the minutes? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We'll now move on to item two, which is the New Ipswich Planning Scheme, the proposed amendment to the Chief Executive Notice and proposal to make a local government infrastructure plan. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? You need to be the first one to use the new AV system, may I speak? Please state your name and your job title.
Good morning, everyone, Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you. Mr Tabullo, I refer to page 17 of the paper, which is, I guess, the second page of the paper, and it does outline the different stages, the five stages of a planning scheme. I can see that, under the agreement made before this council came in, so it was during administration, that before this council came in, that stage two should have been completed, the state interest review, and should have gone to a public consultation. Do you mind outlining why this timeline hasn't been adhered to?
Certainly, ma'am. The, the, um... Situation council found itself in, with respect to undertaking the scheme, following the Statement of Proposals round in 2019, meant that we believed that there needed to be more work done with respect to supporting studies and information gathering to help frame the scheme and the elements of the new scheme. And so, during this period of time, from that Statement of Proposals round, the organisation has been undertaking an exercise of procuring reports that help set the policy direction for the organisation's scheme.
I do know, I think, Mr Tabullo, that you started with the organisation December 19, I think? Would that be...
Yep, that's correct.
Correct, so obviously you've come in partway through. My concern is the revised timeframe, how do we know that we're going to achieve that? What have you got in place to make sure that those timelines are achieved?
Ma'am, we have, we have now what we believe is a very, um... clear set of timelines and milestones to be met by the city design team and the balance of the organisation. It is a set of, it's a timeline that the organisation has reviewed in detail and has got the commitment to it and the ownership of that timeline. As an organisation, or as the executive leading up that part of the organisation, the progress of the scheme is front and centre in my, on my agenda, to be delivered, as the commitment to the organisation.
And Mr Tabbo, may I ask, there's a lot of discussion in the community about this new planning scheme, I think there's a lot of anticipation. Just to give people a bit of an understanding what we can and can't do, can, for instance, if the council's looking at doing it, to say, no new landfill in council? Are we allowed to, are we permitted to do that in the planning scheme?
The framework that the council operates under, which is set by the state, sets out some principles and some rules as such. And one of those is that councils across Queensland, not just unique for Ipswich, have to accept the principle that development can't be prohibited within the planning scheme. Planning schemes are supposed to be performance-based schemes, that means that anything can be tested on the merits of the scheme based on the evaluation against the benchmarks, or the criteria, or the planning principles that are put into the scheme. So, an explicit prohibition can't be stated, but in the crafting and the wording of the scheme and the codes being established, a flavour or an intent can be established as to why something, or some proposal, some land use may be considered to be less desirable.
Thank you. I'll just go to the floor, are there any questions of Mr Tabullo? Thank you, councillor Fekna?
You're right.
Councillor Fekna?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Tabullo. Noting that there is considerable work to be done, do you foresee we'll need to, I guess, bolster our financial position towards supporting the planning scheme in budget discussions later this year?
Not envisaged at this time, councillor Fekna. The commitment that council gave in the budget for this year was to cover off on a range of additional consultancies and studies to be undertaken, and we believe that's sufficient at this point in time. Should something emerge that we suddenly need to do a new discreet piece of work that we don't have the budget for, then we would come to council through the budget review process and present the case for additional funding.
Are the Statement of Proposals still consistent, do you feel, with this council's vision and views of what we want to achieve out of the planning scheme?
At a probably a very broad level, they are councillors, but obviously in your 14, 15 months or so, um... with us or with the organisation, you've set I future in terms of the very high-level direction you want the community and the direction of the community to go. You've set a waste directive about a particular aspect of land use and development, and those will now be reflected into the scheme, but they weren't in the Statement of Proposals in that exercise.
That's, that's my concern. And is that Statement of Proposals document a public-facing document?
Absolutely, yes.
Are people able to inspect that?
Yes.
Just in, just for some general feedback, I tried searching for it in the last week or so using keyword searches, and it wasn't that easy to find, and I think that it is a really important document. I know that it did go to community consultation in 2019. However, the public, you know, discussion and discourse is about to ramp up as, you know, this is the first time the planning scheme has come to us as a full council here this morning. So I just want to make sure that the expectation is clear of what we want to achieve out of our planning scheme, noting that community, broader community consultation plans aren't slated until like next year, you know, early the year after, but I think that we need to be having those conversations now. I mean, we as a councillor are meeting every two weeks in the Planning Scheme Discussion Series to get our heads around it, and I just want to ensure that the community is taken along in that journey and any of the pre-reading that they can do before we go out to them to say, hey, you know, is this consistent with community expectation? I just think that that needs to be readily available for them as well.
I'll certainly take on that feedback, councillor, with respect to the, where the Statement of Proposals is located within the, in the website and see if we can elevate it.
Yep, and there's no need to amend that as per the minister's guidelines?
No, not at this stage, because it's been through a process and adopted by council, but we will come back and revisit that as part of the whole package going forward.
So will we be revisiting that sooner rather than later, considering it kind of formulates the path?
It can form one of the topics at the fortnightly sessions, briefing sessions.
And I just had a question around the local government infrastructure plan. Is it the intention of the organisation to deliver that concurrently with the planning scheme? And is that actually a requirement that that piece of work needs to be delivered at the exact same time? I understand that inherently, you know, one informs the other.
They're linked, yes.
However, you know, noting the work that we can be doing to build the local infrastructure plan to really, I guess, again, represent the views of the community, would it be okay if that, for instance, took a little bit longer and then was incorporated thereafter? Or is it really, really important that we deliver these at the same time?
It would be preferable if they were done together.
Yep.
But the, the infrastructure plan can, can come at a later stage if for whatever reason it can't meet the same timelines.
Okay. Thank you.
I think councillor Ireland? Thank you. May I ask, Mr Tabullo, in the budget, we allowed for significant funding for an upgrade or replacement to PD Online, which I think at the time was, you know, very forward-facing and quite out there, but not now. When will that new software be delivered? So we have another piece, another replacement system, so that's quite user-friendly for our residents to see?
Ma'am, the organisation is, is going through its due diligence with respect to both the...
I'll just check something, your microphone's going red, so I'm just looking at... Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, the organisation's going through its due diligence with respect to both procurement and product selection. I can't give a definitive timeline at this present moment because of, because of those variables that are coming into play with that type of action. But it is our desire that, we want to have it obviously delivered sooner or later. The current version is not state-of-the-art, but it's certainly not, or still delivers, a level of accessibility for members of the community to see development applications and look at the documents online and the like. So it's not as if there is nothing there for the community at the present time, but certainly we want to raise the bar and have the best solution possible.
I'm just going to refer, I know you haven't put your hand up, councillor Tully, but knowing that you're the deputy of this chair and you've seen a planning scheme or two in your time, do you have any questions of Mr Tabullo?
No, I was just going to raise some general issues in the debate, but...
We'll do that later on then.
Yeah, but I think, I think we're on the right track.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr Tabullo? No, thank you very much, Mr Tabullo.
Thank you.
Based on the email I sent out last night, I'll actually move the three recommendations that are there, as well as a fourth one, which I emailed out last night, which states that council will prepare a comprehensive and integrated community engagement and communications plan to ensure the Ipswich public has the opportunity to understand and comment on the draft planning scheme, with this plan to be presented to the council for approval on or before December 2022. I think that ties in quite nicely with the new timeframes. I think the public consultation in here is from March to May 2023, so that gives ample opportunity for the organisation, but also for the public as well. So I'd like to move all four of those recommendations. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. I'll now open it up for discussion, councillor Tully.
Yeah, just want to endorse the comments that Mr Tabullo made about the lack of prohibited uses under planning schemes. That used to be the situation, and I may have touched on this in the past. Councils had the ability, in their planning schemes, to have a whole range of prohibited uses. Some years ago, that was changed, so that basically nothing is prohibited except under some other legislation, but just a handful of things. The most classic example is licensed brothels within proximity of schools, churches, and so on. But that means, and we've had, we had an application some years ago for a crematorium in the main street of Ipswich. We had to go through the entire process of assessing that, because there were no prohibited uses. I think it's time for the government to bring back prohibited uses, perhaps not a large number. We had another application of a, for a funeral parlor in a residential area. There is nothing to stop anyone making an application. It's probably not likely to be approved, but what it means is that the planning scheme, when it's prepared, needs to be very clear that the criteria wouldn't be met. But the community and the, the community and the council needs to go through an entire process because there are no prohibited uses. And I think any councillor here could think of a number of prohibited uses that simply shouldn't be permitted in a commercial area perhaps, like a car wrecking yard in the main street of Goodna, or a funeral parlor in the middle of Brookwater. These are not prohibited uses, people can apply for them. And I think it's time the government reviews the legislation to bring back a concept that had a lot of community support.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, ma'am. I concur with councillor Tully's comments. I was also going to make the comment that perhaps it's time the state government have a look at the intention behind, revisit the intention behind the removal of those prohibited uses. As councillor Tully's outlined, I, you know, I'm pretty sure there's some categories, for instance, a funeral parlor within the suburbs, and equally waste within close proximity to residents would still continue to be, you know, with community expectation, prohibited use. So I'd certainly like to be involved in some work with, you know, the state government and do a bit more research behind the removal. I'm not sure councillor Tully will probably be able to enlighten us all on what was going on in those days, what was really driving the removal of those prohibitive uses. But I think it's time some were included again.
Thank you.
Could I give a simple example? I think one of the issues was that councils had, in some cases, hundreds of prohibited uses. An example of one that was, when I was first elected, was broadcasting stations in residential areas. And that meant that River 949, or QFM as it originally was, I think, had to go through a long, who would have ever thought, you know, a broadcasting station? They found an excellent location at North Ipswich. I think one of the problems was that the council had pages and pages of prohibited uses. It needs to be targeted, it needs to be limited, and it needs to be sensible and probably general agreement amongst, within the state of what is legitimately prohibited within a particular zone or within a particular distance of a zone, such as, you know, waste fills. I think it's a pretty simple concept, and I think it's something that there could be general agreement amongst most councils in Queensland, if the government's willing to do it.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any other discussion?
Yes, just through you, ma'am. I wanted to make a couple of comments about the amount of work that this council has to do to deliver on a brand-new planning scheme. We are dealing with an instrument that's decades old and doesn't reflect the needs, views, or wants of our community, and...
Sorry, can I just ask for some...
And it is a very complex piece of work, and there's never, there's never a right time to build a planning scheme. From the information that I've received and all of the reading that I've done, you're always going to be in between another plan or another piece of government legislation. That means you should, you know, make small amendments. But I think that this big piece of work, we're going to be incorporating, shaping SEQ, which is the South East Queensland Regional Plan, and I know that, you know, that will have a review coming up soon, and we'll have new outcomes that will need to inform our planning scheme. So there's so many moving parts to this, it's difficult to really put down in words what exactly we want. But I think that this council is really committed to ensuring that the community is taking on the journey, and that's really important, but the community, for the community to really understand what we as a local government can reasonably achieve in this new planning scheme build versus what the state government will impose on us. So I think that for the first time ever, we'll be busting a lot of myths, and the timeline says that we won't necessarily be going out to full community consultation for more than 12 months. But that doesn't mean that we, as community representatives, can't be out there talking about this new planning scheme, listening to our community. You know, later this morning in the Environment and Sustainability Committee, we'll be talking about a giant piece of work, the natural environment policy. And if adopted, that policy position will really inform the way that we see preserving the natural environment in our planning scheme. And we need to ensure that our vision from I future, all of the policies that we've been adopting over the last year are truly reflected, and that we do give considerations to the natural environment more than has been before. And I think that that's something that I'm really excited to continue to explore as we build the planning scheme. How exactly are we preserving biodiversity in our city, and what does it mean? We, the words intergenerational equity are thrown around quite a lot, but I think this is a real opportunity to make really great decisions on behalf of the city to ensure that future generations get to enjoy a beautiful city that we all love living in. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fekna. I think for myself, I can see that our planning scheme is nearly 16 years old. I understand best practice is around that, every five years there should be a new one. And on top of that, we are the fastest-growing city in Queensland, so we are well, long overdue. I must say, I am disappointed that the dates from the original Chief Executive Resolution haven't been stuck to, but noting the position that, you know, that happened before that we came in, that this is not a council that will kick this issue down the, will kick this can down the road. We'll make sure that we, we know it's a complex issue, and we want to make sure that we work very closely with residents and businesses as well. I note that very much, I think the view when chatting with councils, that we want to make sure that the planning scheme has sustainable development and also job-creating development as well. I've been to two things called RPCs or Regional Planning Committees. They are chaired by the Deputy Premier, and they do that in relation to the South East Queensland Region Plan. And I think the current one is the 2017 one, which I think councillor Tully, you signed off on as the acting mayor back then. But I've been to two of these, and it has the South East Queensland mayors, and very much the consensus there was the importance from the mayors about public education. We need to do this with the residents, we are a democracy, we need to do this with the residents as well. So I think we're very keen to do this very complex task. We wish to work with the public as much as possible. So we are looking at replacing PD Online, making sure that we have a tool that is far more friendly and user-friendly, you don't have to know the lot number, you can actually see it's, we need something that people can see spatially as well. So I've moved this, and I'll be supporting this recommendation. And I do encourage the community to look at the council, there is a council webpage on the draft planning scheme, and that's where we'll be keeping people up to date on things as well. And I think councillor Fekna suggests that we put the standard proposal on there as well, so it's quite easy for people to find as well, that's a great suggestion. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you very much. And I move on to item number three, which is fees and charges, minor amendments to Planning and Regulatory Services fee. Does anyone have any questions of the council officers on this? No, in that case, I move this particular report. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Johnic. Going to discussion, what I can see is that council has reviewed its fee structure, and the efforts, from what I can see, are some efficiencies here, and I can see a number of fees that have come down, which is a great thing, I'll thank the CEO for the organisation for reviewing that and becoming more efficient, especially as a, as the fastest-growing city in Queensland, as I'll say again. You know, we do need to make sure that our systems and our processes and our people are trained, and we do this efficiently. Are there any other discussion points or comments anyone would like to make? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We move on to item four, which is the Amendment to Capital Investment in Provisional Projects Policy. And this is a report concerning a proposed amendment to the Capital Investment in Provisional Projects Policy initiated by IED. The recommendation that the policy titled Capital Investment in Provisional Projects be amended as detailed attachment two. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this particular item? No, in that case, I will move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Milligan, appreciate that. Any discussion? Any discussion, I think this just clarifies it, it was a new policy, and in putting it in practice, we've just decided to tighten that up and I think make it a bit more, again, a bit more efficient as we go along, so I think it's a great achievement. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We move on to item five, which is the acquisition of land for INF 03144, Eastern Ipswich Bike Way Link. And this report's concerning the acquisition of land for road purposes for the delivery of the Eastern Ipswich Bike Way Link. And you can see the four recommendations there, to acquire land at 40 Thornton Street. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report? No? In that case, I will move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Quinselman. I'll open it up for any discussion? No, no discussion? Thank you very much, I'll then put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. I can see it's unanimous and carried. Item six, the acquisition of drainage easement, INF 04082, 97 Moores Pocket Road, Moores Pocket. This is a report by the, by the organisation, concerning the acquisition of a drainage easement from a property located at 97 Moores Pocket Road at Moores Pocket. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this report? No? In that case, I will move this, all four recommendations, as in the paper. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Quinselman. Any discussion or comments? No? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We'll go to item seven, which is the petition regarding France Street, Eastern Heights. This report is concerning a petition received by councillor Doyle from the community requesting consideration for the implementation of a cul-de-sac at the end of France Street, Eastern Heights, at its intersection with Robertson Road. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this item? No? I'm happy to move this particular report. I don't know if councillor Doyle, you wish to second that or not? Yes? Any comments or discussion on this report about the petition?
Yep, just through you, ma'am, and a bit of an update from the resident's perspective. Councillor Doyle and I have been keeping a close eye on this street. In fact, the day before the petition was, was received by council, at the council ordinary meeting, we went out to meet with residents down there, and and I guess what was communicated to us is that lots of their concerns didn't actually come to fruition, and that it wasn't their intention to, to really ask and advocate for a cul-de-sac at the end of France Street anymore. And those traffic numbers have been quite minimal through the street just by general observations and checking in with our residents down there as well. So I thank the organisation for investigating that and getting back to all of the petitioners as well.
Thank you councillor Doyle.
Yeah, and I concur with councillor Fekna's comments. We've been working with residents in the street and surrounding streets as we undertook our roadworks there at Grange Road. And obviously, our traffic engineers can do the traffic modelling, but our residents always will still have concerns. Of course, they're living it every day, but glad that the concerns the residents raised didn't come to fruition, and the traffic is moving. But certainly, something we need to keep monitoring, and councillor Fekna and I will keep a close eye on things as Robertson Road does become busier, and, you know, further changes are made along there. We will need to potentially review the impacts on the side streets, including France Street.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of concern that it'd become a bit of, people would use that street to avoid the traffic light, but from what I can see, it's not happening at all. Thank you. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We now come to item eight, which is the Exercise of Delegation Report. And this is a report concerning applications that have been determined by delegated authority for the period 18th of July 21 to 18th of August 21. The recommendation that the report be received and contents noted. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report? No? In that case, I'll move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion or commentary on this report? No? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Now go to item nine, which is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report. And this is a report concerning a status update with respect to the planning and environment court actions associated with the development and planning applications. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, mayoral councillors. Anthony Bowles, Acting Development Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. I guess first of all, just want to like to give a very brief update on the largest and most complex matter that's gone to the Planning and Environment Court, which is those where three waste companies appealed a decision by this council.
Yep.
Do you mind giving it an update? Do you know the total cost yet? We know that it was costing $6.6 million. Is there an update on that as well?
Through the chair, I don't have an update on the cost at this point. We are anticipating further invoices to come in, unfortunately. There are some post-hearing reports that need to be produced and there may be further elements of work that come down the track, but the invoices haven't all appeared.
Okay.
So in terms of an update, so the hearings concluded on Friday the 13th of August. So the trial lasted more than 40 days. So there were 50 experts, seven of those engaged by councils. So quite a big hearing, quite a big matter to be heard by the judge. So there'll be three separate decisions on each of the appeals. I would expect between a year or potentially longer than a year for a hearing, for a decision to be provided. And being three separate decisions is a variety of permutations on the outcome, but we are hopeful that our decisions stand and we're confident in the expert evidence that was provided during those appeals.
In the meantime, do the applicants have to adhere to the decision of council?
That's right.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Mr Bowles? No? Thank you very much, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
I'll move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Millian. Any discussion or commentary? No? In that case, I put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 10, which is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report, July 2021. And this report concerns the performance and the capital delivery by the Infrastructure Environment Department for the first month of the financial year. And the department delivered a total of $4.87 million of capital works against a budget of $5.5 million. Would anyone like, may I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the stand, please, to the lectern?
Good morning, Sean Madigan, Acting General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. I want to thank you for the attachment one, which is the first of this report, which is an IED capital portfolio update report. I think it's a really great summary and I think residents will be really pleased. So happy to get feedback from residents on what they think of that particular attachment. And if that fulfils a need, I think it was really great. Are there any concerns or issues that you'd like to highlight to council?
Predominantly, I think I'd like to just acknowledge the work of the department. This is a significant transformation that's occurred in the way that we deliver the capital portfolio and the phasing of it with an aim to deliver it over the course of the entire year. As you'll see there in the table, that indicates the spend for this financial year and the budget as compared with last year. The spend is spread out over the year. So in order to do this, there's been a significant amount of work that the department have had to do to get us to this point. And that's all the way through the department, through the planning stage, the design stage, the procurement and the construction stage. This report, as you said, Mayor, is the new format, which focuses not only on the financials, but also on what is actually being delivered for the community, providing examples of that. The significance of spreading the spend over the course of the financial year has a number of benefits. For us, in the event that there are project delays, it enables us to have time to make that up. It also, from a community and an economic point of view, means that we're injecting significant funds into the Ipswich economy, particularly under our local procurement guidelines that we use and local trades and the like. So rather than a large influx or a big spend at the end of the financial year, you know, it is spread out over the course of the year, which has, you know, the benefit of economic benefit, creating jobs and delivering projects for the community.
Thank you, Mr Madigan, especially with that greater transparency for residents, for us to see as well. I know recently you went to market for a panel, so rather than councils actually going out for design and construction for big roads, we're now getting those panels so we can, we don't necessarily have a lot of large organisations in Ipswich that'll do the full design and construction work. How's that going?
That's right. Yeah, that's going really well. So there's two panels that we're doing. There's a technical services panel, which relates to design and engineering and the like. There is also the minor works panel, which is your actual physical works on the ground, so concrete, electricians and the like. Both of those, you know, have attracted a lot of interest from small and medium businesses in the Ipswich community. And it's probably the first time in a long time that they really have an opportunity to be involved in, you know, delivering infrastructure for the Ipswich people. So previously, with the way that it was structured, it was very difficult for those smaller businesses to get involved. It tended to be dominated by larger contractors who have the time and money to spend going through the tender process. So by creating these panels, it really is a positive for small businesses across the city of Ipswich.
Thank you very much, Mr Madigan. My suggestion, on page 127, there's a table there with grants, which obviously councils rely heavily on state and federal government grants. May I just ask for future reports to have the name of the grant expanded and whether it's a state or federal one, if that's okay?
Certainly.
Thanks, thanks, Mr Madigan. No, thank you very much and thank you to your team. Are there any other questions, Mr Madigan? Councillor Johnic?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Mr Madigan. I just note in your report that the change in the timing of some piling works and bridge works for the Springfield arterial duplication.
Yes.
And I can see that you're all working behind the recommendation to get the award contract through to us by November, which I encourage. If you need jelly beans, I will deliver. I just met with a lady from a P and C yesterday who shared her concerns about kids crossing the Springfield Parkway, which is stage two, which will obviously work in line once stage, is it three or one? Stage one gets delivered. So at this point in time with the whole plan, there's no delays overall?
No.
Okay.
That's right. It was just the works that have been done that we're talking about, the delay are early works for the project that will enable, you know, the main works that are out to tender at the moment to actually be delivered. So those early works will be completed well in time to actually go out to tender and bring that major contractor in for the works.
Wonderful.
So at this stage, no anticipated delay.
That's fantastic. Just noting that the children crossing Springfield Parkway on that Topaz intersection is getting really congested and it's, I feel that it's quite unsafe. So this stage two will bring about that signalised intersection there so they can cross there safely. And this is the quickest way to get it done, obviously, through this project. So yeah, just commending you for keeping it all on track. And yeah, and always can deliver sugar when needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Madigan? No, thank you very much, Mr Madigan. I'll move this report. Do I have a second for the report? Thank you councillor Milligan. Any discussion on the report? No, in that case, I'll put the report for the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. The next item is item 11, which is the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive Update Four. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, mayoral councillors. Brett Davy, Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr Davy. Do you mind providing us with the highlights in the last month or since the last update?
So the highlights since the last update, we've had a follow-up meeting with the Joint Task Force, as in the state government Joint Task Force, so that's meeting number two. We've been working with a working group beneath that task force to develop a action plan. Action plan is not quite ready to be publicised yet, but we are making progress on a joint action plan with actions for both us and the state government. We did have a planned code of practice workshop, which unfortunately got delayed due to COVID, so that's an upcoming action. And the regular meetings between ourselves in terms of operational staff and our state government colleagues, particularly in DES, in respect to the operation of our respective branches and in the compliance space and building better relationships with them to be more collegiate in our approach, have continued. And we got an update from the Ode to Abatement Task Force presented to the councillors, which was, I think, was quite beneficial to get an understanding of what's happening from that perspective and how we can work better in terms of the Ode to Abatement Task Force. I suppose the highlights from that for me are the importance of the community continuing to report issues as they experience them and that there is an overall strategy with the Ode to Abatement Task Force. So we're working with them on how we can provide some better communications to the community on that.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Do you mind reminding us of the membership of the task force at this meeting?
So the members of the Joint Task Force are made up of the Director Generals of Department of Environment and Science and the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning, as well as our CEO. And there are a number of observers that attend from various departments and branches within council and the state government.
Thank you. Are there any issues or roadblocks to that task force or how is that going?
Going quite well. So I don't think we've got any roadblocks at the moment, but I'll be the first one to put my hand up if I think there is something that we need.
That directive, this Waste and Circular Economy Directive, many of the principles in there depend on the success of the task force.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Are there any, was there any discussion on, I know it's one of the, one of the principles there is lead by example and one of the things we're doing is the trial FOGO campaign at the moment. Was that discussed at the task force?
Only briefly. The discussion was probably higher level than that. But there was a discussion on FOGO and the task force are very interested to see how we go with our trial. And there was some discussion on some of the results in terms of level of contamination and diversion rates, in terms of the material coming out of the red bin and what the proportions of recycling versus red bin. And our proportions are quite good and coming down compared to some other SEQ councils. So there was some optimism there. And my take on that is that that figure can continue to improve if we get our community to recycle well, particularly with the glass transition back to the yellow bin.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions, Mr Davy? No, thank you very much, Mr Davy.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'll move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. I'll open it for discussion and I guess I just want to reiterate obviously the changes that we have made with recycling. In 2018, the Chinese government decided to stop taking recyclables from Australia. So as a result, the federal and state governments have put targets on us. And we do need to reduce our landfill by 55%. That is an obligation that local councils have. So we have now brought glass bottles and glass back into recycling, so you can put that in your yellow bin now. We're also trialling, and there's been a lot of discussion on social media, but we're trialling with 1,000 residents in Raceview and Bellbird Park for FOGO. So the waste collections haven't reduced. Bins are still getting picked up. But instead of, for those in the trial, the waste collection has changed. So rather than picking up your red lid bin every week, your green bin or your FOGO, your food organics and garden organics bin is being picked up every week. And then alternatively, you'll have the yellow recycle bin picked up one week and then the next week, the red top bin for that particular trial. I want to thank the people who are participating in that trial. They were all notified by the 26th of July. But I know people who aren't part of the trial are very interested to know what's happening there. So we'll continue to put out marketing and then information on our websites. And I see at the moment, we've got some billboards out as well, just to inform people on what's happening there. Ourselves, Townsville, Rockhampton, I think Lockyer are the first councils in Queensland to do this FOGO trial. So we are sharing information to get the best results. And it's really important that the residents who are taking part in this trial are open and honest with us so we can look at what we're doing in the future. We note that in New South Wales, they have mandated that there will be FOGO, this collection, by 2030. So this is what's happening around the rest of the world. It's what's going to be happening here in Australia. And I'm very proud that the fact that Ipswichi council is leading the way here. I know there's some very passionate people. I can see councillor Johnic's already got her microphone on.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add that organic waste, if it was a country, it would be the third biggest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions behind the USA and China. So this push that we, or this journey that we're on as part of our resource recovery strategy and the FOGO trial interlocked within that, is something that we're not alone on. So we've been mandated to hit certain targets by 2025 by the state and so have other local councils. And noting that South Australia has been doing this since 2012 and their recycling for organics is like 80%. So it's everyone that I've actually spoken to, once I've gone out to talk to them and they've been dead against it, once they actually realise the reasons behind it and the greater good, they do come on the journey. So I think it's going to be a massive learning curve and no one likes change. But we do need to start owning our own rubbish and not just simply thinking that it's a set and forget. So, yeah.
Yes, I think noting that 30 to 50% of what's in our red bin is actually the food organics and garden organics that can be composted. So we can automatically reduce landfill so easily by doing this.
Yeah, and I think that once you communicate to people that the FOGO is kind of just composting on steroids is how I communicate. So we are really comfortable with the FOGO term, but people, our residents, aren't. So if you actually just go, well, it's composting, but it's like, you know, high-level composting. So it's hair and manure and your green and your food, even bones. Like it's literally grows, it goes really. So yeah, we just need some more communication on this, I think. But, you know, our residents have been doing great so far, so I do applaud my Bellbird Park residents.
I think the main thing is that the waste collection hasn't reduced, that the service that council hasn't reduced. It has changed for those trial residents. We're still doing the weekly bin pickup as well.
Thank you.
Is councillor Milligan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to concur with your remark before in that the amount of contact that I have received, particularly as Chair of Environment and Sustainability Committee, is that it is the members of public who are not in the current trial areas who are desiring for more information. It has led to some circumstances of misinformation, as councillor Johnic referred to, where we need to verbally explain and assist people to gain that understanding of the process and the reasonings for it. I think if we did get that material information more readily to the greater city, that would put a lot of other people's fears aside. And knowledge defeats the fear of the unknown every time.
Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any other discussion? No? I'll put this matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We have no notices of motion, no matters arising. And just before we close out, I'm going to look over to Harrison. When, knowing that this is not live streamed, but this is being recorded, when will this be loaded up on the website? This afternoon? Okay. Okay. Again, my apologies, it is new technology for us, but we will have this up on this afternoon. With that, I will now close the meeting at 9:54.